I'd like to call to order the February 8, 2023 council meeting of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to start before we get up. I'd like you all to remember Patty Moyer. Our solicitor Chuck Garnert lost his longtime assistant Patty Moyer. Patty passed away February 1st at the age of 54. You may not have met Patty personally, counsel, but if you ever received anything from Chuck in the last 36 years, it's most likely came from Patty. Our condolences to Patty's family, Chuck, and Wolf Baldwin Law Firm. Patty will truly be missed. So I'm going to ask that you rise for a moment of silence and keep Patty's family and friends in your thoughts. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan?
With you, okay. Have a presentation?
Can I thank you for that? Patty was a wonderful woman. I worked with her for a very long time. We used to speak and talk about the Phillies for hours and hours on end. She was a wonderful woman.
Yes.
And it truly breaks my heart that she's no longer with us.
All right, at this point, I'd like to call up Gary Machka. All right. Another member of our borough family moves on to the next part of his life. So today, we have a resolution for Gary Mica. Recognizing Gary Mica for 19 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Pottstown, whereas Gary Mica has served the Borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 2003, whereas during his career with the Borough, he's served in several different capacities, including Public Works Department Service Worker 2, Water Distribution Service Worker 1, Water Distribution. Whereas for the past 10 years, Gary's had worked in the position of wastewater collection worker within the Public Works Department. And during that time, he assisted our residents by cleaning and maintaining our sewer mains and responding to customer service inquiries throughout our neighborhoods in all types of weather and traffic conditions with the highest level of customer service possible. And whereas Gary's presence at the Borough Garage will truly be missed by the people that have worked with him. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the town council and mayor that Gary M. Mica is officially recognized for the outstanding service he was provided the Borough of Pottstown through 19 years of employment. And further, he's extended the best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Gary. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Want to make a speech?
Speech, speech.
I've talked to a lot of public people out there. All talked out. Okay, subcommittee reports, starting with infrastructure. Counselor Lebedinsky, anything?
That's in your packet?
Anything to add? About transportation?
No meaning.
We're okay. Efficient methods, Counselor Lebedinsky?
Since I didn't have anything, I didn't find anything from the last meeting. What we went over was from November, since we didn't have a December meeting because of the holiday. We launched the website for trash issues. We're still beta testing for other facets of the program. We'll be watching the website and then working on email notifications for the work orders. We had some ideas for the phone system for next year. And also a video tour, and I think I mentioned that the last time that we have interns working on that, that'll give you a video tour showing Borough Hall and the places to visit. Again, we're looking at three programs for this year, which is the Business Registry Vacant Properties. Since Frank is back now, we can expect some movement on that. And we will have a review meeting for the documentation on those programs.
Great. The ordinance review committee, Counselor Prosser.
We did meet and the majority of the conversation was bed and breakfast and short-term rentals.
Great. Okay, economic development?
Nice question about ordinance. Have you guys put on the agenda yet to discuss the change in ordinances for issuing citations?
What particular citation? Some re offenses or?
Yeah, and just like what we, I think we talked about it a couple of months ago. Instead of people having to go to court to argue, like neighbor disputes, it's just an issuing of a fine.
Is that in our purview? Can we, it sounds like a good idea, but.
I would, I would recommend that, I want to talk to the police chief about that first, if you haven't yet.
I have, and we talked with the solicitor. So I was just wondering if that was on the agenda for the ordinance?
It's the first I heard of it, but sure, yeah, we could.
Okay, we'll touch base, circle back.
Okay, economic development, I don't see Peggy, anybody from that?
No, she couldn't make it tonight, and she'll plan to report next month.
Monday?
Next month.
Next month?
Nothing there. For the boards, the land bank also, anything on that?
Nothing that I can't cover in my, my report.
Emergency services. Chief Hand, have you anything? Welcome.
Yes, hi, chief.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
Yes.
Good.
Every month I come up here and I talk about how many runs we did in the Borough fire-wise or EMS-wise. And last year was no different. We, we were busy again. We had almost 1,382 fire responses. Now, some of them were less than 100, and we're in West Pottsgrove. I know that's been a concern, but less than 100 of them were in West Pottsgrove. So the Borough had around 1,200. And then EMS in the Borough was around 6,000 calls. So the department's pretty busy. But because this is the end of the year, I wanted to give a, a small report on some things that were going on in the fire department. Last year was pretty good. We put a new pumper in service, and that was thanks to the Borough. We got that grant, and the Borough matched the grant, so we got the new pumper. We also got a new boat and some other rescue equipment with that. The big thing was our community outreach. We know from our records that we reached out to almost 600 children in the Borough between kindergarten and fifth grade for fire prevention and safety education. So that was pretty significant from last year because the schools were not letting us in. So we did a lot better. Our community outreach, we did all the parties, 4th of July. Last year, we got from Operation Save a Life from Action News and Home Depot. We had over 500 smoke detectors. We have about 30 left, so we're hoping to get another replenishment. We did really well with that program last year. Couple other little things. We had six members complete the firefighter 2 certification, which puts them at the next level of their training. Each one of those classes was 100 hours, so that was 600 hours. Not counting all the times that we have regular drills and training on Thursday nights. And those numbers don't really show because it, it doesn't come up on our report that way for hours served. So it's something that I wanted to make sure we talked about. We got involved last year in September. Montgomery County got a grant, and we didn't have to match it, but it was called Make Me a Firefighter. It was started in December. They, they did a campaign on Facebook. They did some commercials on some of the community channels. And we've gotten three inquiries in less than a month on that. Every one of them was under 18. We've reached out to them. We're trying to come up with a program to make that work for that 16 to 18-year-old. So we're hoping that, you know, that'll increase our volunteers in the future. I'm planning to put out a written report on everything we've accomplished, but I just wanted to give you some highlights tonight.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you back.
Human relations. Ms. Levin, good.
Good evening, counselors, council president, and Madam Mayor. February is Black History Month, where we honor the incredible contribution of the Black community has made throughout United States history, from civil rights leaders to artists, politicians, to inventors. We celebrate the Black history from the past to the present. Remember your Valentine on February 14th. And President's Day is on Monday, February 20th. And the Commission's February meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 14th at 6 o'clock in Council chambers, and everybody is welcome to attend.
Serving chocolates.
Hope to see you all there.
On February 14th, you said?
Yes. Come, we're going to share the love. See human relations.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. How about the, how's the library doing, Ms. Lipsky?
Hello, everyone. How are you tonight? The library's doing great. We have noticed a drastic increase in foot traffic. I'm wondering if that might be because of some of our new cushy seating that our friends of the library have donated. We've also put back more tables in the main floor area for people to be able to enjoy. And we've noticed that our passport services have exceeded the numbers since pre-pandemic times. So people are coming back out to the library and taking advantage of a lot of our great services. We have started into a new, very successful adult program. It's adult crafting, and it's taking place every other Friday. And the next session is this Friday at 1 o'clock in the, in the library. And speaking of chocolate, we have an ongoing fundraiser at the library where we sell Richard Hawk candy bars. So if you have a sweet tooth and you want to pop in the library and stock up on some chocolate, that would be great. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council and the Borough for your continued support with the library. Without the help from you guys, we really couldn't do all the great work that we're doing at the library. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Library's great.
Yes, and I love that adult thing that you're doing. Unfortunately, I can't go because time-wise, but it's nice. I like how you engage in the public. That's, that's good. Thank you for doing that.
And just currently, something personal, thank you for the automatic renewals on the books.
No problem. And now every library in Montgomery County has auto renewal. So no matter where you get your book from, you'll be, it'll be automatically renewed when needed.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, the Ricketts Community Center. We have no Counselor Kirkland.
But I can say something on the Ricketts.
Yes, please.
Okay, so on February 3rd, they had a Black History program just for the kids at the Ricketts. And they, each child stood up and they had a person that they were talking about, and it was really good. You know, they got to do some public speaking. You can tell someone was a little nervous, but they did some public speaking, and it was informative, and they had a good time. It was in the gym, so that was nice.
Thank you. And the school district?
Okay, so for the school district, the superintendent Rodriguez had, did a video on Facebook to make sure that the parents update their contact information, because a lot of times they're called regarding their children, and they have an incorrect number or the number has changed. So if you would like to receive text messages, you can text yes to 87569. They're also converting to Power School, and they're saying goodbye to e-school. They also, the, the school district also encourage attendance and encourage the support. Apparently, the attendance is still down even after COVID. So parents and guardians, please encourage your children to go to school because you had to go, so they have to go too. There is, our cadence letter was sent, and that's just of reading about evaluation of your child. Don't worry about it. It is just a formality. And if you have any questions, please reach out to the school. Pottstown School also having High School Musical on stage, March 3rd at 7:00 PM, March 4th at 7:00 PM, March 5th at 2:00 PM, and sensory-friendly, March 4th at 1:00 PM. So, and, and I got really good news. I got really good news. So I am wearing my, my shirt, because if you guys didn't hear, hold on, I gotta tell you this. I gotta tell you this because you guys know my journey through, you know, going to Harrisburg and my little pom-poms and me getting my chairs on for Pottstown. So, breaking news, in a historic victory for students, a judge has declared Pennsylvania's school funding system was unconstitutional.
You're here.
Y'all hear what I said?
That's PA Supreme Court.
Did y'all hear what I said? I'm, the reason I started this journey, reason I'm sitting up here, because I've supposed to have been doing school board, is because my taxes was high when I bought my house. I, and I was like, why is the taxes so high? Marlene Armato pulled me to the side right here when I was in the audience, and she said, I, I told her it was because of my taxes. She said, I want you to see this, this presentation. I went to the NAACP at the Ricketts at the time and seen a presentation of how, not just Pottstown, Lancaster, Philadelphia is a whole different, it's horrible. But long story short, I tell people, if you be consistent and you fight and you know what's right, and you just keep going and you keep going, it will happen. I, I don't know, I just knew this was going to happen. It's like baby steps. I knew it was going to happen. They proved that the students who need it the most have the least. Because the state shortchanged low-wealth communities, it's time to change that. Education is a fundamental right guaranteed by the Pennsylvania Constitution to all school-aged children residing in the common wealth. So they passed it. There's still some more to it, but I just wanted to let y'all know that all them times I was going, that we were going to Harrisburg, we took three buses from, from Pottstown. Three buses, I think it was 2018. And now, this is what happened. Just wanted to bring that good news to y'all. That's, that's, that's a big win for us.
That's, yeah.
Yes, that was a, that's a big win for us. So I want to thank everybody, Laura Johnson, Metro Power, it's, the, all the faith leaders that came down to Harrisburg. Joe Cerisi, he was always had our back with this. So it's just, it's, it's good.
So the work's not done yet, and from what I understand, now the real work comes, and everybody should reach out to their legislator and encourage them to adopt new legislation in line with this ruling, because that is the next thing that needs to be considered in this, in this step. The PA state legislator needs to act on this.
That's right. So call your, the, you know, when you went to go vote, call them.
Please.
They make a, call them. Make them work for it.
This is very, very important here in Pottstown, because if you own property, three-quarters of your taxes for school purposes.
It's the path.
Yep, three-quarters.
It's the path.
And it's about time we get fair funding.
Yes.
Great, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Madam Mayor, how about a report?
I apologize for being late. Crazy. So since last time, I attended the 16th Annual Martin Luther King Celebration at First Presbyterian Church. It was really nice. They did collection baskets, and all the donations went to Pottstown Beacon of Hope. We also attended the NAACP Martin Luther King Celebration at Mount Olive Baptist Church. And we honored Mark Gibson and Pastor Carey and Lester Carter, Stacy Woodland of the YW, and Nick Shigurupati of Pottstown Pharmacy for their excellent leadership skills. It was a really nice presentation. I also reviewed applications and interviewed seven candidates for the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas judicial position. It was really difficult this year. There were so many candidates that had the experiment, the experience and temperament to be a fine judge. And unfortunately, we only have one spot, so we can only choose one. But I do urge all the other applicants to not let this deter you from running again in the next cycle, because your time will come. Oh, I attended the redevelopment authority meeting on the status of grant funds. And Justin, please feel free to correct me if I am wrong. We had a meeting regarding the status of grants to assist homeowners directly impacted by the explosion. And it looks like we may get funds to cover for the two homes, probate and inheritance tax costs, and additional funds for single system repairs to those that were directly impacted. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Yes, the total is?
250?
269,000, and it came from a closed DCED Communities of Opportunity grant. It was money that was not used, so some creative, you know, people figured out how to use this to help the victims of Hale Street.
That's good.
Yes, thank Judy of Genesis Housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, for her, just, she thinks outside the box and was able.
She's good.
To do that, so I'm glad that we could get that, and hopefully that'll come soon. On a sad note, we lost a couple of important Pottstonians last month, and I attended Bob Redinger's funeral and Loretta Zorneki's funeral. I posted on Facebook their memorial cards and a tribute, if you'd like to see, and read about all the things that they did for Pottstown. Bob Redinger especially had a big impact on my life. He's a Rotarian and lived up the street, and is one of the reasons that I'm sitting here today. So, thank you, Bob. Oh, I, we had our community leaders breakfast meeting at the YW. I want to thank Jonah for hosting, and I brought props, so Go Forth fundraiser. You know, the fireworks that everybody likes, that we'd like to keep. So. Was that upside down? If you would like your garden flag, I think it's $20 or $30. They have big ones like this, and then they have small ones for in front of your house, like on the porch.
I have one of those.
So please donate and get yourself a really cool flag, because I like to see these all flying. I'm taking my Penn State down one and putting this on.
It's not just the fireworks, it's the whole thing.
Yes, it's the whole thing, but people don't understand how expensive the fireworks are. In addition, Hobart's Run is having a fundraiser, and I bought this very cool portable grabber, trash grabber. It also has a light. And for those of you who've had back surgery like me and can't get on your knees and get under the bed when you drop something, it has a magnet, which is super helpful when you drop things that roll under the couch, and to get your cats from out from under the couch. So, and it has a light and extends, and this is also $20. So I encourage everyone to get their own trash picker.
That's weird.
And we can go.
You didn't get us one? You didn't get us one?
I made out of money.
Dan brought us cookies.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So the grabber and the flag are 20?
No, each.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, I think the flag is 30, but, yes, two different ones for Go Forth, and this is Hobart's Run. So those are my props. Sorry, I realized that I was really tired and I didn't understand why, and then I looked at my report, so it's been a busy month. Okay, I also attended the, we had a safety meeting for businesses. It was hosted by paid. And I want to thank everyone in attendance, and especially our police department, for taking the time to listen to concerns of the business owners. It was specifically focused on safety issues for business owners in town. And it was evident from that meeting to me that we have a strong network that's dedicated to keeping our streets, residents, and visitors safe. But this is a collaborative effort, and hopefully, we're all on the same page for businesses and residents that we're going to increase and improve lighting and call 911 to report any criminal activity. Don't post it on Facebook or the Gram, because I guarantee you, the Pottstown Police Department's not looking at it. Call 911, so there can be a record of it, and they can respond. And I'd just like to remind everybody that being homeless, being un-bathed, sharing the sidewalk, accessing public buildings and establishments, just walking around Pottstown is not synonymous with engaging in criminal activity. So please be aware of that. I attended a first PCA meeting in a while. Their membership has grown. They have a tool share program now for residents, so if you need drills, power tools, lawn mowers, things like that. They're planning a smaller version of Rock the Block, because we kind of lost the habitat for humanity, like partnership. And that is slated for April, and I think the date is to be determined, because I think they're moving it since everything is on the same date in April. So stay tuned for that date in April, and the next meeting is March 6th at 6:00 PM at Victory Christian Life Center. I also spoke to the Arrow of Light Den Club, number 146, about the mayor's role in the community. Mostly, they wanted to know if I liked pineapple pizza and if I gave autographs. Yeah, to which I both answered yes. I had, also had the distinct privilege of uniting Samantha Miller and Matthew Mossholder in marriage on the steps of Borough Hall, followed by a reception at Splitting Edge. It was such a beautiful ceremony. They decorated like all the way up the stairs. I got in trouble because I forgot to take them down, and they were up Monday for everybody. But I think it cheered everybody up that came in. Well. I'm going to hold my tongue on that. I would like to thank Charlene, who works there. I must have thrown that axe like 30 times and could not get it to stick in the wall at all. And after like one tiny lesson with her, like I instantly got a bullseye. So ladies, if you're looking for a unique fun experience and competition, you can inquire at Splitting Edge about their joining a league. They have a women's axe-throwing league. So that's what I did last month. Coming up Wednesday, February 15th, from 11:30 to 1:30, is the Pottstown Progress Lunch at Sunnybrook. Pots, sponsored by paid and Tri County. Member tickets are $55. I don't know if any of you are going. Unfortunately, I have all-day trial. It's the 15th, Wednesday, 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM at Sunnybrook Ballroom. Soldiers. So if anyone is going, please take notes and update me. I was really excited to go this year, but I have trial all day in Montgomery County, so I can't. And then if everyone could put this in your calendar, February 17th, on Friday, February 17th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, we are having a Welcome Home Concert at Pottstown High School that was organized by Pottstown Cares Club students, which are high school students from Pottstown and from the Hill School. And they are showcasing their talents to raise money for Your Way Home, which is an organization that supports our local homeless population. Tickets are only $5 for students and $7. Tickets are only five dollars for students and seven dollars for adults. Um, you can go to eventbrite.com to purchase tickets in advance. Check Facebook for the link. Or you can buy tickets at the door and they will have refreshments for sale. And David Charles, I think, will be performing and Oats, not Hall &amp; Oats, I think like an no, it's not, he won't. Um, somebody who's like going by oats is going to be performing, but I encourage everyone to go. Before the pandemic, they had a concert that I attended and, uh, I, I was blown away at the talent of these kids, so. Um, save the date, April eighth, one to four at Riverfront Park. We are having an Easter egg hunt, an art fair, story walk, obstacle course, puppet show, egg hunt and prizes sponsored by Pottstown Community Arts and Mosaic. Um, April twenty-second, six to ten is, uh, Hal's Swing Into Spring Event. And the twenty-ninth, so far on my calendar, uh, at ten AM to three PM is Edgewood Cemetery Spring, uh, Art Fair and Cleanup. And for announcements, I promise I will hurry up. Uh, Big Brothers and Sisters is looking for mentors. I'm sorry, do you have something to say? I didn't know if you had a question. Oh, okay. Um, Big Brothers and Sisters is looking for mentors, um, for their Beyond School Walls Program. Um, the time requirement is one hour, um, per meeting with your little twice a month and I think you meet at Video Ray right on High Street and do homework and, um, before and after, uh, school. So if anyone is interested, please email ali mullins at A mullins at independence bigs.org, B-I-G-S dot org. Um, TCN also has a list of emergency resources that they just put out for Pottstown, uh, Greater Pottstown area. And I encourage all council members to get that list and share it with, have it and share it with your constituents. Um, it's also online, um, a more comprehensive and updated list. Um, it's for all emergency, uh, resources, um, for the Greater Pottstown area. If you go to pottstownbeaconofhope.org forward slash F A Q, um, there's a whole list of services or TCN has that pronounced. Um, everything from food to shelter to, uh, you know, what's open, police department, everything. Which is very helpful. Um, we have a new Montgomery County Commissioner, uh, who's taken over for Valar Koush. And I'd like to congratulate and welcome Jamila Winder and we look forward to working with you.
Yes.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Cortell and the entire staff at Radnor Vet for multiple occasions taking care of our little Coco Bean, Scuba Steve the Rabbit, who has a terrible sinus infection and had to go undergo anesthesia twice, so thank you Radnor Vet. And last but not least, I'd like to formally welcome preemie baby Ryan Thomas Stravienko to Pottstown and let him and his parents Marielle and Adam know that we are praying for strength and a swift recovery. And I'd like to shout out to the medical teams at CHOP and the Ronald McDonald House. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Anything, Mr. Keller?
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, so I'll start out with some grants. So we received a grant award from DCNR, uh, in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. Um, this will go for improvements at Chestnut Street Park. This is part of a, uh, kind of a co-mingled companion grant application that, which we now have four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand for in funding for, uh, two parks, so it'll be Chestnut Street and South Street Park. Um, the improvements for Chestnut Street Park will begin in twenty-twenty-three. Um, and then the improvements for South Street Park will probably start later, twenty-twenty-three, early twenty-twenty-four. And, um, just want to give a big shout out to Parks Department and Mike Lenhart, um, for assembling this, uh, package of funding, uh, to keep the borough parks in good upkeep and, um, the playgrounds, uh, safe and fun for our children. Um, next, another, uh, park project. So we did receive approval for our P A D P permit for the design of Memorial Park Pedestrian Bridge. I know this project has been a long time, um, in waiting, so we also plan to proceed with this work in twenty-twenty-three um, to replace the bridge and then also make improvements to, uh, Manatoni Creek Waterway and embankments. Um, so the next step will be submission of the plan to DCNR for their review. Um, and then we did cover the RDA funds that is, that are going to the, um, uh, victims of the Hale Street explosion. And then, uh, also we are planning on reapplying for the RACE grant, uh, for the construction of the Keystone Boulevard, so if you recall. Last month I announced we got three million for the, um, preliminary, uh, design, engineering and, uh, survey work. Uh, this would, uh, grant would be for the balance of the rest of it to construct it down to the, so interchange. So we applied last year. It was denied. However, um, we have, uh, most of the information on the application that can be reused, but there is going to be a five-thousand-dollar consultant fee, which the borough would pay half of and we're waiting on an answer from, um, West Pots Grove to see if they'll cover the other half. I believe they, they have a meeting tonight as well, so the application round closes on the twenty-eighth and, um, as long as there isn't any opposition and we get the other half from West Pots Grove, we would move forward with that, um, application. And then, uh, some updates from the land bank and in regards to the borough, so most of you got the email on Monday. Um, we finally transferred seven oh seven Hamilton, um, to Genesis through the land bank. Um, so that has been a project that we've been working on for, for a long time. It's going to, um, provide affordable homeownership opportunities for a load of moderate income family. And it's just, uh, really great to see organizations, uh, working to make homeownership truly accessible to, uh, more people while also helping to remedy blighted properties in the borough, so really wishing Genesis all the best in those efforts. Also for the land bank, uh, at the last meeting, uh, the land bank did acquire, I believe it's nine forty-eight Queen Street. That could be off on that address. And we did interview, um, three potential applicants and I think the land bank will be hopefully making this, a decision at their next, um, meeting if any of those applicants, um, would be qualified to be transferred the property to. Uh, an update on the Pottstown Airport, so we do have a new, um, operator in place and we are open for business. Um, the fuel tanks were recently cleaned and aviation fuel is available. And then just this week, I also approved the purchase of a self-service fuel pump. So we hope to install these soon and then once that is in, fuel will be accessible, uh, twenty-four-seven at the airport.
So who's the new, um, operator? You got a new person that's going to run it? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's, um, it's actually, uh, a gentleman that's, um, volunteering to, um, run the airport. He's one of our longtime, uh, hanger, um, renters up there. So Kirk Myers, the gentleman that will be doing that.
But he's not the FBO, right? He's just doing this temporarily?
Um, yeah, we have it, you know, for a year. Uh, we're thinking until we figure out if we want to go back out to bid again, we want to get the self-service pumps installed. And essentially he is, yeah, I mean, he is serving as the de facto FBO right now. He is ru, he's running the operations at the airport. He's opening the office. He's pumping fuel.
Is he under a contract?
He's volunteering.
Right, but is he under a contract? Like, what if he creates some liability and like blows up the airport or what have you?
Better not, but go ahead.
Like, I'm just thinking, we're like, how is he not under a contract if he's operating the airport?
Um, this is a temporary situation. If you recall, we put it out to bid twice. We received no, um, interest in it at all, so we are literally trying to keep the airport running, uh, right now in a manner that is affordable for the taxpayers.
And I totally understand that and you need to tone it down a bit, um, with the airport and your attitude about this. My concern is that I know it's a volunteer and he's doing this and we're, he, he's not paying us, we're not paying him. But don't you think, I don't know if you would like to speak up, solicitor, um, that the borough have, um, a liability contract in place? So of like, what is expected?
It's my understanding we have liability insurance on the operator and the operator also has liability insurance as well. That names the borough.
Do we know this for sure? I just think that we should
I can get you the answer. I don't, I mean, I don't have it right in front of me tonight.
I just think we should protect the borough's interests and make sure that we can't get sued for somebody else's
Yeah, because I
operations regardless if they're getting paid or it's a volunteer thing. That's all.
Checking.
Sure.
Um, just a reminder, uh, March is, or, uh, February is, uh, Safe Digging Month, um, so that's Pennsylvania eight-one-one. Um, if you are doing any construction projects in the area. And then just a update on our, uh, lighting project, uh, in the borough. You may have noticed, um, we've been installing, um, new LED, uh, lights which will, uh, save us money and also save on, uh, energy and reduce our carbon out, output. So seventy-five have been installed in Ward, Ward Four, um, so far out of the total of a hundred and fifty-two, um, to be installed in, in Ward Five and part of Ward Seven. Um, it's also my understanding that the borough is going to be getting a, um, carbon reduction alloc, allocation um, from the, the state. And, uh, we are, uh, looking at using that allocation to, um, fill out the remainder of our, our lights into, uh, LEDs um, as well as potentially some, um, hybrid or electric vehicles. So there aren't, there isn't any guidance on that program yet, but we were just kind of kicking around ideas with, um, the G V F. And then lastly, um, the, uh, borough is closed for President's Day on Monday, March twentieth, or February twentieth. concludes my report.
We're good. Okay, uh, where are we at, twelve? The presentation of Chipotle, uh, Mr. Hovey, what do you got for us?
Uh, this is related to the land development plan submitted for two-hundred Shoemaker Road, the site of a future Chipotle. If you recall, on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, council adopted resolution two thousand twenty-two dash three, which granted the land development plan conditional preliminary and final approval. At this point, the developers completed all of the conditions of the approval except for one. The developers required to secure council's approval of the final architectural elevations. The developer's attorney, Rob McNally, is with us this evening to present to you the developer's proposal for the exterior of the building.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, Mayor, Matthew. Thank you for the introduction. You covered most of my, uh, presentation. I have, uh, two handouts here, but we also submitted, um, elevations. Uh, they went through the solicitor's office. I'm not sure if we updated the, uh, agenda. Earlier today, it still had a, an earlier version of the, um, elevations, but we had a new February third version. And so the, um, council previously reviewed the architecture and the elevations of essentially three sides of the building, but our, um, the, the rear, what we considered the rear of the building was, um, relatively plain. And, uh, what I, I should have said with my introduction, my name is Rob McNally and I represent Interstate Commercial Real Estate and, um, uh, Pottstown Equities, the developer of this, uh, Chipotle and retail center.
And for clarification, there, what you designate the rear is actually facing Robinson Street?
Well, that's what we found out, yes. So your staff and, uh, professional staff, uh, advised us of that. Wanted to see some architectural improvements to the, um, to what we were calling the rear. Uh, we went back and forth a number of times and, uh, it was just this Monday that we submitted the plans that I have here for you. If you'd like me to pass them out, we don't have them, we, if we don't have them electronically. I also have them on a thumb drive if you'd rather see them on your, uh, on your board.
There we go.
Perfect. So it's a little bit difficult to see it. The, the side that we were concerned with is the second one from the top. And in the earlier versions, that was just, uh, a, a plain wall. So, um, we took the advice of the borough manager, uh, gave us some photos of, um, uh, in particular, I think it was fourteen-hundred East High Street. Uh, it had some, um,
McDonald's?
Uh, brick, uh, columns that were, um, set, uh, in regular intervals on their facade. And on, on Monday, our architect did the same thing, so it's difficult to see on this plan, but if you don't mind if I step up here. Each one of these was added. And it's approximately, uh, three and a half or four feet wide. They're exposed, uh, columns. They're about two and a half inches. It's, it's a, an actual brick, but it's a thin brick. Applied to what would otherwise be the, the stucco facade. It's the same brick that's used on all the other sides of the building. It looks like it's, uh, black or dark gray on here. The brick manufacturer calls it a, um, flagstone. So it's like a bluish, uh, gray slate. It's, uh, part of the Chipotle's, um, trademark facade. So we extended that color on the stucco all the way around. We added these columns which are almost identical to the ones on fourteen-hundred East High Street, which is what the recommendation was. And you'll see that the column extends up above what looks like the second floor and it looks like it's supporting a, uh, weight here at the top of the brick. And then again, there was a cornice that was added to the, to the very top to add an architectural detail. Then wall sconces, which are lit, were added on this side and then also matching sconces all the way around on the other three sides to, uh, connect the, the theme. And then also at, at the request of the borough manager, there are, uh, awnings added over top of each one of the doors. They're, uh, standing seen in that, uh, in a, um, a bluish gray color, matching the rest of the teeth around, around the other sides. And I, I once again apologize, they're difficult to see because of the gray colors that we're dealing with. They're all very close to each other. So these are the bricks, match the other sides, awnings, uh, top of the pilaster and then the, uh, sconces. I also have on, with that same, uh, file, there was a second file that was submitted. It's a letter from the architect which describes the five changes that were made to the, uh, to the, uh, architecture, uh, this Monday, February third. So we've, uh, we've received all of our outside agency approvals since, uh, you granted the land development approval last year. We've, um, executed the developer's agreement, submitted, um, executed and signed and sealed record plans. We paid all of our fees, posted the bond, posted the cash escrow for engineering review, paid the tree fees and we, uh, made the fifty-thousand-dollar voluntary, uh, donation towards the future traffic circle that's proposed on Shoemaker Road. That was all done. Um, and so this was, this one remaining condition that we kind of caught, uh, in, in the last month. So we, we were asking that ne, next week during your council meeting that you would vote to, uh, approve this modification to that uh, fourth, uh, side of the building. And then also if you haven't already, um, execute the, uh, the, the record plans and the, the developer's agreement so that we can get those, uh, recorded.
Yes, I just wanted to point out the reason why we're paying so much attention to what, you know, is, is called the back of the building is because it actually fronts on, on Robinson Street. So it, it really truly has, this building has three sides to it that'll be viewable to, from the street. So we just want to make sure that the appearance is consistent throughout, yeah. Um, I just have one question. So there's, um, on the, on the top part of the back of the rear elevation, there's, there's spaces for signs? I guess, is that what those rectangles are?
Yeah, they're, they're indicating, uh, future signage. It'll be based on the, uh, based on the tenants. There's no Chipotle sign, I don't believe, on the rear of the building. They're on the other two sides. And the, uh, the space for the signs will be subject to whatever the borough ordinances are regarding, uh, size and, and, and type of sign. That's just the proposed
But you would put the signs on that, that side too?
Possibly. I, if there's enough, uh, remaining allowable square footage and the tenant wants to, uh, have the sign visible from the back, then yes, they'd put them on there.
Okay.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Uh, someone came up to me today and asked me a question regarding the status of the property. Someone's had the idea that this property was for sale. Is the owner of the property selling this? I'm just going to ask a question.
No, no, I, I believe that this property was already purchased by Pottstown Equities. And, um, the Chipotle is a, um, signed on as a tenant, provided we have the necessary approval.
Naturally.
But the property is not for sale.
I just wanted to answer a question. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if council would like to look at the example, fourteen-hundred High would be the Dollar General. Okay, if council would like to look at the example, fourteen hundred High would be the Dollar General.
Yeah, I mean, that was just, that, that was kind of an example of the brick, palasters.
Premium outlets, right? That was another.
Yeah, the premium, the back of the premium outlets, that was another example that we put out there.
The fourteen hundred Ha- High Street was much, uh, better, uh, for our, our architect to use because of the scale of the building. The premium outlets are e- enormous, and the, uh, pilasters that they were using are, uh, four-foot, uh, by four-foot columns, and they actually support a second floor. Uh, but they look very much, from a distance, like the fourteen hundred East High Street building, which used the same, uh, materials that we did. A thin brick veneer, uh, extended outside of the, of the, of the facade. And then it appears as though it's supporting a partial second floor, but it's really only, uh, raised from the building a, a few inches.
List that?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, Three Diamond Group Land Development.
Yes, this land development application concerns four fifty-four King Street, which is located along Washington Street between King Street and Buttonwood Alley, within the T T N Traditional Town Neighborhood District. The property is comprised of two parcels. The applicant essentially is seeking a lot line adjustment. This means that the applicant wants to move the existing boundary line between the two parcels to increase the size of one and reduce the size of the other. In this case, the reason for wanting the lot line adjustment is to correct an error that occurred when the property got conveyed years ago and essentially conform the parcels to how they're presently described in the deeds. At its January meeting, the Planning Commission recommended preliminary final approval of the land development plan, subject to the applicant satisfying the comments set forth in the engineer's review letter dated January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and the Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letter dated December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, as well as the grant of the requested waivers contained in the applicant's waiver letter dated January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The relevant documents are all attached to tonight's agenda. Uh, this one's relatively straightforward, and as I note, is intended to correct an issue with the two properties. It does not involve any type of improvements to the property. Uh, President Wee, is there anything I missed from the Planning Commission's end?
Nope, not at all. This one's very simple.
Unless there's any questions or objections, you know, I recommend this be listed for Monday evening.
We'll do so. Uh, fourteen, street lighting. Mr. Keller?
All right, so this is for, uh, seven nine, or seven fifty-nine Sheridan Street. The applicant has offered to provide, uh, an LED, uh, Cobra Head light that could be mounting on one of the existing, um, streetlight poles that we have in the borough. Um, and this would be instead of installing a new pole and light on Sheridan Street. So since this is a change from the original plan approval, uh, council approval would be needed. And, um, Public Works has reviewed the lighting in this area, and the suggested approach, um, uh, is thought that it would actually provide better illumination of the area, um, and Public Works is recommending approving this change.
Good. Very good. And then we'll list that for Monday. Okay, fifteen, the Colbertdale Railroad Walkway.
Okay, so we did talk about this last month or a couple of months ago, and, um, since then, you, the, the project was originally envisioned to be, um, completed by, by Colbertdale on Borough property. As we, uh, and again, this is for construction of a path between the newly-built station and then the parking area in Memorial Park. Um, but as we got into it, um, there were some constraints of other grant sources that were kicking the whole project into, um, prevailing wage rates. Um, the other thing that complicated it was that since Colbertdale was doing it, they were going to be required to go through land development, which would have, um, added time to the project. So a much simpler and efficient and more cost-effective solution is to have the borough actually hire a contractor and complete this work. So this would avoid the necessity for the project, um, again, to go through land development. It would be under the bidding threshold, um, and, um, the, the borough would be able to award the contract to a contractor and then ge- get reimbursed by Colbertdale Railroad. So Colbertdale would still be responsible for the maintenance of the pathway, um, as well as reimbursing the borough for any construction, um, or engineering or survey work, um, that, that might need to be taken as, uh, the workers get into it. And we're asking our solicitor, or, uh, council to authorize our solicitor to be on work on the appropriate agreements for this, uh, project.
Okay, any questions? We'll list that for Monday. About Thriving Communities Program.
Recently, we, um, submitted a letter of interest in partnership with the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation and Montgomery County, um, to the Thriving Communities Grant Program, which provides planning and technical assistance in and around, um, the future train station location for the, um, Schoolkill, uh, Inter-City Rail. So, um, we've been invited to move on to the next step and submit a letter of commitment by February fifteenth. And our partners are currently working on the letter, and we hope to have it ready for your, um, potential approval on Monday night.
Oh, good. Right, seventeen is the approval of services, civil service list. Ready?
Yep, that's right. We've got a new list, and, um, we've got some candidates.
Wonderful. Anything we need to do on that?
Just to, just to prove it.
Just to prove it?
Yep.
Okay, we'll list that, Jenny. Uh, eighteen is authorize conditional offers of employment to five applicants on the civil service list.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. They're ready, um, you know, we've got two on the list that, uh, are already police officers, so we'd like to go ahead and, um, get them offers before they potentially get snatched up by somebody else, which will also allow us to get, um, more men or women on the street quicker than hiring a new, than hiring a new officer. Um, and then the other three, uh, we'd bring in, um, to replace, uh, those that were lost to attrition or, and/or for the new positions that were authorized.
So we'll list that for Monday. Uh, back on zoning, the Clark Industrial Supply, Mr. Hovey?
Yeah, the next three items listed on tonight's agenda involve pending zoning applications for relief from the zoning hearing board. Uh, these will be listed on the agenda for Monday evening. For the benefit of our new counselor and the public, for each of these, you'll be afforded the opportunity to support, oppose, or take no position with respect to the relief that is being requested. If you support or oppose an application, you may choose to actively participate in the proceedings, such as through your solicitor or other official, or send a letter communicating your position to the zoning hearing board. The first application concerns three oh one West High Street. The applicant is Clark Industrial Supply, Inc. The applicant operates his business out of the property. According to the application, the applicant's requesting a variance from section five oh seven six of the zoning ordinance to allow for larger-than-permitted storage facilities on the property. Specifically, the applicants are seeking a variance to allow for two three hundred and twenty-square-foot storage containers to be maintained on the property for storage of inventory and supplies in order to proactively address current and future supply chain issues. If permitted, the containers will be nine feet in height. I believe the hearing on this application is advertised for February sixteenth at seven P M.
And how does this vary?
In terms of?
Well, they're normally not allowed to have that many containers.
Yeah, correct. They're, they're looking for the number of containers, as well as the size of the containers, or beyond what the zoning ordinance permits.
All right. So we'll put that on for Monday.
The second application concerns three seventy-nine Cherry Street, which is located in the N R Neighborhood Residential District. The applicant is Adele Munsey. Uh, based on the application, Ms. Munsey seeks to operate a dog daycare and training facility with grooming services in the existing building on site. The building is approximately twenty, that, twenty-seven square feet in size, twenty-seven thousand square feet in size. Use is not permitted within the neighborhood residential district. Consequently, uh, she is seeking several use variances from the zoning ordinance in order to allow for the proposed use of the property. Uh, this is, this is scheduled for a hearing on February sixteenth at seven P M also.
Any questions?
Um, I just have one, um. Not that this applicant would do any of this, but I think that maybe, um, you should take a look at our ordinances for nuisance, um, and dogs, because we've had issues with neighbors and residential settings not being able to, uh, you know, resolve many dogs or the, the smell of feces and, and, uh, urine in the yard. And that, um, we have a lot of noise and, uh, what, what do you call it?
Barking?
No. Smell.
Yeah. Especially in the summertime.
They're residential, right?
Right, but, yeah, so I just think that we need to, like, sharpen up what our definitions of.
So the barking have to be one of fifteen minutes?
I believe it's fifteen minutes of continuous barking?
Yeah, I just, I was concerned, I know, like, in Don's Ward, we've just had, for the past, like, five, six years, we've had some issues with people, um, and breeding dogs and, uh, overpopulation and not treating their properties, that's all. That was just my.
Right, we can take a look at some of those ordinances between now and Monday night, and again, you have the option. If, if, if there's specific conditions you want to propose for the use, you know, we can communicate those via a letter to the zoning hearing board. So if you have any thoughts, you know, please filter them, you know, to me over between now and Monday.
For the future, we could always send it to the ordinance review committee. As if you're not busy enough. Okay, so we'll list that for Monday. And, uh, that, that would, this is going to occur in your ward. Andrew, yeah?
Yeah. Is that six word?
What's the cherry?
Cherry?
Three seven nine cherry? Is that in the sixth? Oh, yours? Okay. I'm sorry.
Never mind.
We'll confirm, we'll con- we'll confirm with, with everyone.
I don't, I don't have the whole map committed.
We have second, we have second word on that one.
Ward seven.
Okay.
It's in Ward seven?
Second.
Second.
Second, Ward two.
First?
It's right on, if, if it's on even number.
No.
We'll confirm the word.
Okay.
It gets very close.
If, if, yeah, if it's on the north side, it's mine.
Right.
Please.
And for anyone, please send me any concerns you have, so we can try and propose conditions, if that's the route you want to go.
And then? Number three?
Can you hear me? No.
Okay, the.
And the third?
The third application concerns two eighteen East High Street, which is located in the downtown district. The applicant is Daniel Doll. Mr. Doll seeks to operate a tattoo studio in the existing building on the property. This is not a permitted use within the downtown district. Consequently, he essentially is seeking a use variance from section three twenty of the zoning ordinance to allow for the proposed use at the property. I believe this is a newer application, and there is not presently a hearing scheduled. Uh, this application, though, does not provide a, a lot of information regarding the proposed use. So for this one, is there any chance that Mr. Doll or anyone is here on his behalf this evening?
I ask this stupid question. We just, we just had a, a presentation for permanent, um, uh, makeup, which is essentially tattooing. So how is that different from, I mean?
Sure.
Essentially, a basic. How is that different?
It's an issue of geography. She, she's in a different district than the downtown, and you have different uses and prohibited uses by district. So in the downtown, this is not permitted. At that location, potentially, it would be. Okay, so that's all the information we have on that one.
Is, is the applicant for this here tonight to, would like to make any statement, or?
I think we need more information on this.
Make sure. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see anyone online. Okay, wow.
Maybe he can come out Monday.
Sure, we, yeah, we invited him tonight, so.
There's no hearing scheduled yet.
Correct, the, this, the hearing is not scheduled for this one.
See if we can get him here and find out more details about this.
Okay.
All right. Uh, twenty-two is the chemical bid award. You have copies of the bid.
Yep.
And add that for Monday. Property maintenance bid award, again, for Monday. Fee resolution amendment. Uh, any comment on that?
Yeah, so I can just kind of go over that briefly. It, it includes changes to Public Works, mainly, um, licensing and inspections, and also there's an Exhibit A, which is, um, regarding the Pottstown Airport, uh, hangar fees. And then one of the things that I do want to point out, just so that everyone is aware, is that, um, we're adding on the events, on the large downtown events, like the car show that closed multiple blocks, um, we're going to be adding on a fee of a hundred dollars to cover the cost of setup and tear down of the detour sign package, which we implemented yet last year. Um, this includes extra, um, barricades and signage that directs vehicle traffic around the downtown events and into the parking areas for the events. Um, it, it really helped us to reduce a lot of confusion, um, last year. And, um, we are also going to be requiring, um, these types of events, uh, to cover the costs for two police officers. Um, so in total, this will add about, you know, one thousand, one hundred dollars plus or minus to each, uh, car show or similar event.
Okay.
And, and the reason is, is that previously, um, you know, we were pulling officers from other areas to cover the car show. And, um, we no longer feel that we can do that. We want to be able to keep them out where they need to be, and if an event needs extra police presence, we would call in additional officers that are not on shift to cover that event.
Okay. Anyone? Nothing? All right, we'll list that. Uh, resolution for the destruction of records, and we do this every year. And, uh, Pottstown Rumble. They, they'd like a beer garden?
Yep, so I think this is a pretty similar request to previous years. They would like to do a beer garden again on the twenty-third through twenty-fifth.
Okay. No questions, we'll add that for Monday night. Twenty-seven for parks and regula- regulations, or recreation, uh, half marathon on April fifteenth, tax day.
Yeah, so this will be, yeah, this will be College Drive, um, closure between Hanover and, um, Keystone Boulevard.
Okay. We'll list that. Twenty-eight, the upcoming board vacancies, uh, there's, uh, for Human Relations Commission, there's a vacant term to expire January nine, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, and we do, we did receive two applications, um, from Marsha Tonight. So we'll include those for Monday for you guys to look at.
Okay. And, uh, for the Planning Commission, one four-year term to expire February one, twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, and, um, Brian Heidier, I believe, is requesting reappointment.
It's the only one we got.
Reappointment?
Reappointment.
Reappointment for Brian, okay. And does that have to be acted on Monday?
Should be, because his term was expired February.
February one, yeah, I guess it does. Okay, Brian, so add him. Okay, how about, um, any comments from our citizens present? Anyone online?
Yeah, so we'll, uh, check that in a minute. Um, just before I get started, just to remind everyone, it is our, um, policy to take comments from the public. Each, um, member of the public has three minutes, and we typically do not respond, um, at the meeting tonight, but we will get back to you afterwards. So first up, we have Bruce Madera, please. Any, any emails?
Good evening. Obviously, if anybody's awake here, I'm on communication or lack thereof. And my one suggestion is to take all these microphones I have out here, because either when I'm here or on TV, I have no hearing problem, no, no problem with my TV at home. And some of you are three, four feet away from the microphone, not paying any attention to it at all. And I made complaint twice here, out of order, but Robert's rules allows it to be done. Uh, further communication, I think there should be some between managers and citizens, taxpayers, once in a while. I had a, uh, an issue or concern, and I called, uh, Licensing, and, uh, two people gave me, read me the rule having to do with this concern. The concern didn't have to do with, uh, zoning, but I was passed to the zoning officer. It didn't have to do with churches breaking rules, but I was still referred to the zoning officer. I was not referred to the head of, uh, Licensing. I don't even know his name. I forgot his name. He's so invisible. Uh, secondly and briefly. Secondly, and briefly, previously, I reported my water meter broken, and what I got from Borough Hall were two cops breaking in and a creative health counselor checking my legs out for dry skin. Well, now, in January, a woman next door went kind of nuts and was screaming for about an hour or more. And I called 911, the woman said, is a violence going on? I said, it sure sounds like violence, she's really screaming pretty loud. Two cops appeared and no creative health counselor. And I guess the cops were able, well, they were able to settle her down and take care of the matter. So my question is, who decides? We send two cops and a counselor for a broken water meter, but a woman screaming, and I think she was physically fighting with her husband, right next door to me, disturbing me. This doesn't get a counselor, a creative health counselor. I'm not talking about you guys as counselors, creative health counselor. Although some of you could probably counsel me better. Thank you very much.
That appears to conclude citizen comment.
Oh, okay. How about councillors, any comments? Ryan?
Actually, I got invited to go to a, it would be an adult Sunday school at First Presbyterian. And then I was there with Tom Niro, Sabika, and I helped, and we had a good conversation. And we had two points of view, and maybe a few scowls, but nobody threw any stones at me or anything like that, but it went well.
Councillor Bannion?
Um, I'll say some of it for Monday, but we hear so many bad things that a friend of mine, he lives up on High Street, sent me a picture, I think it was yesterday. Because he works from home, so do I, that there was a gentleman walking down High Street, and he was at it apparently all day, using chalk to draw hearts along the sidewalk. We usually hear about like really bad things going on, like in between cars and on the street. So I thought this was really nice around Valentine's Day, just to make people smile. And if I knew who he was, I would go out and help him. So if you're watching, let me know who you are. That's all.
Councillor Lewandowski?
Not an Eagles fan, but go Birds.
Councillor Lindsey?
Really? Okay. He said, don't start, so I'm gonna keep the peace, keep the peace. I meant to, I forgot to say that David Charles is looking, Strive Initiative is looking for mentors in the middle school especially. So I don't even have David's number available. But you can always contact me, and I can give it to David. My phone number is 484-302-1412, and it's also on the Borough website. And I would like to also welcome my new Montgomery County Commissioner, and I'm sure she will be coming around with, can you think of his name? Don't tell me, don't, I'm having, Ken, Ken Lawrence, sorry, sorry, Ken, don't. It's because he's an Eagle fan, and I'm trying to block him off of my social media. So anyway, yeah, I'm sure Ken Lawrence will bring her around, so congratulations.
Councillor Minas. Any comments?
Well, yeah, I do. This is a blast. I enjoy doing this immensely so far. I have, you know, learning a lot, okay, learning a lot about how a borough runs, and it's awesome. I really appreciate this. I am not looking forward to getting beat down, so please don't beat me down. I would like to remain as positive as I can. And one final thing, go Birds.
I would just like to say that I appreciate, sorry, I would like to say that I appreciate Gus Tellis for representing Philadelphia Eagles and for wearing his Eagles jersey. Thanks, Gus, and thanks for always being here and dealing with us up here, so I appreciate.
Yes, thank you, Gus.
Thank you, Gus. Dealing with us, the jersey.
Even though it's a Mike Mamula jersey.
Dan, before you finish, can I mention one thing I forgot to say?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I know you can hear me.
You owe me one.
About the Fourth of July, the Go Fourth Celebration, if anybody knows a face painter, would you please contact me? We're looking for face painters for the Fourth of July. I see a pointing finger, contact me. Thank you, that's all.
Tonight, she'll put it on permanently.
I'm not sure we're looking for that.
Oh, okay.
For the Fourth of, for kids.
All right.
Lisa?
Eyebrows are a different story.
Okay. Lisa, have you asked Bronwyn?
No.
She's very good, she loves to think the faces.
We need a couple, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
But yeah, she's, she's always into that.
Right, well, I'm certainly wishing Eagles some best of luck, and I would like to invite them here to Pottstown to celebrate after they win the Super Bowl.
For the Eagles parade.
Right, they come to the Pottstown, we'll figure out a parade.
If that happens, I'll become an Eagles fan. With Trinidad.
Meeting of journalists.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.